It'd be nice, I mean, the majority of us will all be together, so between the admin and the board, just to throw thoughts around.
Yep.
And we get little tiny checks from...
Cotton Gallery is one of them.
Walmart?
Yeah, Walmart. One from Cashwise is Cotton Gallery.
Okay.
And we get one from Walmart, too.
So, and it might be a way to kind of get us out there. Once I hear from Shields, maybe we step it up and add a little bit more because we do a lot of business with Shields as a school and as a community, so. But like I said, I don't think we get rich off of it, but it might be something habit in place and it might work out pretty well, instead of just being dominated by Morehead Spots.
And my thought is simply, when you look at it's those border plate type of forms that are used and I'd pull about forty percent of it out, out of state. And if Kevin says, yeah, there's a lot of other schools, we'd set up the same thing for other schools. And if Shields would rather just do it directly with us, then we use that same border plate for any of them that are going to do it, whether it be Cashwise. And now Cashwise isn't sending the money to somebody else who then is sending us a check back for our share of it. So that all that goes out goes directly to us and not a middleman in between.
And I don't know what was currently agreed upon. If they just said, oh, here's, you know, almost out of the kindness of their heart, they're going to throw us a little bit and they're keeping eighty percent of it. Who knows? I don't, all this stuff that we should know. And Shields will be really good as far as with all the Fargo schools and even Morehead, they'll kind of know, no, we prefer doing business off-site with K-12 licensing, or no, we handle a lot of it, you know, in-house and we can do that for us. So, I should know tomorrow and we'll be happy to discuss that at the retreat.
Awesome.
That's all I got?
That's good.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to six point two, the community ed report.
Well, we have, we have a few things on ours. We're pretty, pretty knee-deep into summer rec right now and we'll touch on that a little bit, too. We spent a lot of our time on the Park Avenue project, just trying to stay up-to-date hour by hour, day by day and where we are. And right as the summer was ready to kick off, you know, you have a road closure and you get rain and you get everything else, but we try to make it work. I've shared with Brian. I attend the weekly construction meeting on Mondays and they give us kind of an overview of what they're doing. Obviously, that changes every day when they run into something else, you know. Brian and I were talking today about another conduit line that is, you know, they came upon some of those unmarked ones. You try to figure out what they are and where they are and what they're for. So, we, from a safety standpoint, for summer rec or anybody that's in the building, we started out the summer with both of our basketball camps started the first week of school. We did that this year just so that they were actually in different towns going back-to-back. Unfortunately, the first day of summer was teacher workshop day, so we made it work and, you know, it went fine, but we are escorting the kids across the road when we, you know, need them to come to the Glendon building when we started off the summer. Now, as we've gotten into a few weeks of it, we've tried to move most of our camps and classes to Dilworth. We, you know, just from a safety standpoint, we did that. We also, after a few days, we decided to add a Johnson Park pickup on the south end of Glendon. So, any activity that we offer, be it in Dilworth or Glendon, softball or whatever, if a kid lives at the south end of Glendon, the bus will pick up at the softball field, go around the gravel, out, pick up at the Johnson Park, and then proceed around down Seventeen. Same thing upon, you know, when we return, they will do the reverse and drop off. You know, we get situations like last Thursday and we get an email saying now we're closing Seventeen. So, you know, you're just, it's almost like a maze. Where are you at? And you're on the radio with the bus driver just saying Seventeen's closed for the day now. What route do we want to take? So, you try to be on time, you know, as best you can, but the biggest thing is the safety, making sure the kids are walked across. You know, nothing we could have done really about the beginning of summer when it seemed like every day the axis of where you cross changed. So, we try to communicate that out and we do that to the staff as well. So, we'll have another one. I'll send out another one tonight. I was just talking to the superintendent a little bit ago about they're trying to determine a conduit line that is two lines that are exactly the same four-inch pipe, electrical red-colored pipe with a one-inch pipe inside with three lines and they can't figure out what it's for. So, we're checking the football, you know, announcing booth to the visitor concessions to the ticket takers because we have internet, we have phone, so we're going to, you know, do all that, you know, tonight. By tomorrow morning, we'll know where it's at. You can't do anything when it's a line that hasn't been marked and that's what they're running into. Some of the lines are unmarked and they come upon them and they tear into them and it is what it is. Last week, when we had the gas, gas line, four-inch gas pipe, they tapped into that and they come kind of running into the building until you evacuate and you do and you do the, you lock it down, you do the announcement on the, you know, PA system, exit the building, you do another one, and then you have T-ball starting in ten minutes. So, then you're rushing over there. But overall, I will say it's gone well. No incidents with kids or parents. It's an inconvenience more than anything. In regards to access and where we're sitting right now, I asked this morning at the meeting, will we have any issues with fall sports starting on August 12th? No, they said we won't. They've built in enough timeline that they don't foresee that's going to be an issue. The kids will, they'll have a gravel road and they'll be able to cut through and get into the high school parking lot. If that changes, I'll let Joe and admin and everybody know on operations where we're sitting so that, you know, they're aware of that. They know on back-to-school night on August 27th, they don't foresee that an issue as well. They are at a position right now where they have it broke out into three phases. Phase one is Seventh Street by the high school parking lot to the railroad tracks. Phase two is the railroad tracks to Highway 10. Phase three is Seventh Street south to 12th. Right now, they're waiting on more pipe, so they have decided that to not, you know, waste any time, they're actually going to jump over the railroad tracks starting on Thursday and they're going to start milling all of that all the way to Highway 10. So, then we won't have access from Highway 10 down to Seventh. You know, it is what it is, but like I shared with Brian again today and we've talked about this is, we just, with Eileen, I've talked to her, is we have to be mindful of fall. When school starts, there really will be no access from Ninth down to 12th. So, when you think of Setters Corner, Setters Farm down to Part, 12th Street, we'll have to have another alternate pickup or something for the kids, obviously, on the south end of town. We talked this morning about buses, how do Setters get in and out? So, they said that they'll probably end up parking their buses maybe at the Pender Barn and then just go south on 10th and, you know, east or west or whatever, so it...
What's the goal date to be done with the entire project?
It'll be carry all the way through into this year and then they'll finish up like, I think, the final lift or asphalt or whatever next spring.
Okay.
So, it's a while. The one thing, too, that they shared with us was with this project, it's overseen by Celine Brothers out of Holly. Celine was not aware that a subcontractor for Excel was also coming the day after school got out to do a job, so there was twenty more trucks in the vicinity that they really did not plan for. So, we make the best of it, you know, and you turn around and you don't have water, you know? And I know people don't want to use a porta potty, but it is what it is, you know? So, but I think it's going fine. It's more of an inconvenience. So, if there's anything that I need to be adding to the emails, more detail or anything like that, let me know, let Brian know and I'll add that, but I'll send out another one tonight, just where we are right now. Okay?
Well, I've appreciated what you've been sending out.
Communication's been awesome. Communication's been awesome and I, you know, have a child doing softball and going to volleyball and, you know, where the pickup is is great and it works out and there's always someone there to greet the kids and when they get off the bus and get on the bus and so there's someone to control the chaos.
Yeah, yeah.
So, no one, you know, or not, no one's left.
No.
So, it's very secure.
And it's pretty straightforward. There's no questions.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, nice signage, like, you know, shuttle bus pickup here.
Yeah.
You've done a fantastic job, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Summer rec, like I say, it's, you know, it's going well. We, you know, did the two big camps. We did volleyball camp the second week and that was nice because we got those three camps right out of the way, right out of the chute. Now, we're into ponytail and T-ball because what we found is when we have them in the middle of, like, late June, early July, then they miss a game or whatever. So, now we try to make it so that they didn't have any misses and we, it was nice that you had like varsity boys camp in Glendon when little boys were in Dilworth and it was just going back and forth, back and forth. The buses were nice and full and like I said to Brian, we probably have a little extra miles on there just because of the Johnson Park, the park pickup, so. But other than that, we're tracking everything. I mean, it seems to be going well. If you have any questions or concerns, let us know. We'll try to look into it.
Did we get any Felton request pickup? No? No, okay, just curious.
You know, and the one thing with that is we wish we could say we're going to pick up at nine and two, but what we have to work around is we try to work around the special ed availability. So, when the suburban's not being used, that's kind of our timeframe of when we pick up because if we were to say, what do you need, we would open up a, then we have to meet their need and their need. So, we've just said we have a one-way on certain days and we haven't had any.
Okay. Just curious.
I love that Johnson Park pickup.
Yeah.
It's just good to keep the kids out of Park Avenue.
Yeah, yeah. Post-prom, you know, we obviously wrapped that up a while ago, but it went well. I mean, great turnout, kids were great. We did primarily gift cards. Kids got a gift card for attending. One of the recommendations for this year's class that just went to post-prom was they only want to give a gift card to the attendee that's a junior or senior, not to the guest and the underclassmen. So, that's still the same recommendation. We had a wrap-up meeting a week ago and they liked that. We stuck with gift cards. They picked, we have our games that we do and the more games you play, the more tickets you get. And the tickets, you can put in designated gift bags. I want the printer, I want the fifty-dollar gift card or whatever. So, we did that and at the end of the night, it was in and out, you know? The one thing I did here and we will follow up again with the prom committee is several kids, by the time they got to post-prom, they said we left the dance at like 10:15. We left the dance at 10:00. It just was too long. When you think of, they're getting ready at eight, nine in the morning and they're going till 4:00 AM the next day. So, we will talk to the prom committee and see, is it something that we could start prom grand march earlier and the dance maybe from, you know, 8:00 to 10:30 and proms so that maybe we wrap up by 3:00 because they're getting tired. We probably had maybe seven or eight at post-prom that didn't show up and we called. And yep, we know, they're here, they're here. Nope, they didn't want to go, they were tired. So, everybody's accounted for. If they don't show up, we call. They want to leave early, they can't leave until we talk to mom or dad. And we make sure that the list we run has actually mom and dad's cellphone number and not the number they gave us. So, anyway, but it went well. Last thing I had on there, I know as an operations, we met with the operations committee of the school board on policy 902 and policy 902 is one you're looking, I think, maybe for the second time. We did make a couple revisions after the committee met and maybe just if there's any questions on those, on that policy, by all means, I can try to answer them. But one of the things that we tried to really look at was, one, we wanted to update the policy because it was ten-plus years old. Two, we looked at the rates and tried to get those in line. Some of them, none of them really went up more than five dollars and were still lower than other neighboring areas. Another thing that we looked at was when we have different groups using the facility, one thing that's important is they have to have the million-dollar liability insurance if they are an outside user or AAU or travel team or whatever. So, we make sure that we get that. Second, with the rates in the policy, you'll see the different categories, you know, like DGF activities, you know, those take priority. Then two is government and it keeps going down the line. But one thing that we looked at was when we do have youth tournaments or a private club coming in or something of that nature, we are recommending, and that's what's in the policy, that a lot of those extracurricular, youth basketball programs or volleyball programs, say if it's run through Mike or Tom or Tessa or Davy, if those were to run through the school so that when we do have like registrations or gate fees or concessions, those, that revenue goes back into the activity account so that it's managed by the school district versus, you know, outside. We just thought that that would be just a little bit, little bit cleaner and it just, you know, puts everything in the district's activity account for that program. With that said, we also noted that if they, a group does come in as, say, a youth basketball, for example, and they are going to have a tournament, we would provide, the district would provide someone to take the tickets. So that we would then collect the revenue, track it, and then you'd get like 25 cents for every ticket sold that would go back to the district so that we have that. Just allows us to have it all in one area. Any questions on that or Brian?
A couple of questions.
Sure.
This summer baseball for the young ones, third through sixth graders, with the different teams come in, where are those games held at? It says that at Glendon, but is it at Glendon? Is it at Dilworth now?
What do you, like, community ed teams?
Well, I don't know what, if it's a community ed from all the different towns, too, you know, Holly and Barnesville.
During the day, during the day, they would be coming, like Holly, Pelican, Ada Borah, Waban, they would all be during the day, us. But if it's at night, other, the only thing we have at night is T-ball, coach pitch and soccer. So, if it's something outside of those three things, that would probably be something run through the athletic club, the baseball club, and so forth. I know like right now in the summer, Tessa Tisver has the Buffalo River Volleyball League that she runs. That's not through us, so then we would work with her on facility usage. Okay? She's done that for a few years or...
No, their ballgame setup is supposed to be in Glendon on Wednesday. It says or whatever, like Holly is playing in Glendon like...
During the day.
12:30 to 2 o'clock or 2:30.
Yeah, that's us. We play in Glendon.
So, where do they play at at Glendon?
Glendon, we will use Field One or Two.
Which is where?
Now, the varsity or the JV field right along Seventh Street, the old athletic complex.
Over, you're just on Field One?
Yeah. Yep. We've even created a fifth field. It's just a grassy area for T-ball and coach pitch because we don't want the parents and students having to go behind the school in Glendon for Field Three and Four.
So, I got to try to figure out where I got to go on Wednesday, so.
Oh, yeah. You can park.
So, go down to East Street and go straight into...
Yeah, down Partridge by Kelly Richards' house.
Yeah, and park, you can park right in there.
Yeah.
They brought in sand, someone brought, that was amazing. Thank you whoever approved that.
The other question on this conduit pipe, how or what does that sign on Highway 10 fed? Where does that come from?
You know, I had Scott Lofman over this afternoon and he said that is not fed by an underground wire. He said the city of Glendon has no knowledge of any map or anything of where the wire would be. He said, my recollection in thirty years he's been there is that it is wireless.
Because I thought they used to feed it from the school, didn't you?
And I said, I know that we had like a meter on there and they've taken that off, but he said that it's not this, it's not this wire or this type.
The city of Glendon actually was paying for electricity for a long time. We weren't even getting built for it. They didn't realize it was ours. And then when the state came through and did that project, then that's when it got cut and I don't know where it goes or whatever, but we haven't had power to it since...
So, nobody uses it or feels anything anymore, so?
The power was cut when the state went through and did some resurfacing or something.
But it may still have been wireless as far as...
As putting the messages out there.
It can't be wireless for electricity.
No.
But it may be just, it's just staying, it's not, we didn't have electrical wire then coming all the way to the school.
Right. Because it was wireless to put the messages up. They had an app for that or whatever.
From the school.
From the school.
And I think in talking with the state last year, they said that there was two projects going along side by side. They did one in the fall of Seventeen and then some in the spring of Eighteen and they said we wouldn't, we're not going to claim that it's our responsibility because the city also had a project in there and both of them are saying it's not us, so.
One question for you. Sandy and I were talking at graduation, would the post-prom, or prom committee ever consider moving prom off Thursday weekend since we don't rent MSUM anymore like we did, like back in the day? We were just talking about that. It kind of stinks because the kids are all tired and then all the moms that are working at night. I mean, just something to talk about for next year.
Yeah. You know, and I mean, I don't, I don't think the committee would, you know, it's kind of like you move graduation off Memorial Day. I mean, I don't think they have a strong way, one way or the other. The only thing is, is if we want to change that, we would have to do that before the high school handbook comes out because it's noted in there.
Oh, it is, okay.
That...
That doesn't get approved until...
August.
August.
Yeah.
So, you got time? We'll just mill about it and think about it, but I think it'd be nice to move it off that weekend just since we don't rent any, you know, I mean, we rent stuff, but I mean, it's not, it'd be nice to have Mother's Day. Everybody shot?
Fishing.
Oh, and fishing, I see. Look at Wayne over there, it's all about the fishing. That's all right.
Maybe what we could do is come up with a few alternate dates and, you know, maybe meet with the junior class next year earlier than when the handbook comes out and get their recommendation and see what the other towns are doing, too, so we don't have...
Oh, for sure. I mean, it would be unfortunate to move it like really far into, you know, early April because the weather, you know, it'd be nice to the last week of April or first weekend of the year.
This is my fifteen finals.
Yeah, I mean, just maybe consider, see what they say.
Be good.
Anything else?
You got it.
So, tonight for the second reading, recommendation regarding the baseball club and the usage.
Yep.
Is the recommendation for all facilities, not just the outdoor?
Yeah. You know, I was visiting with Brian and I would say the recommendation would be all facilities because the baseball club, the softball club, and the athletic club all do use the facility, the theater for meetings, hitting in the gyms, so, you know, just to be fair and consistent.
So, indoor and outdoor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, and that's why, you know, I said, don't just go there and sell all fields.
Just want to clarify.
Yeah.
I think it'd be helpful, too, sometime to get, you know, the full board and some of these, all these clubs that use the facilities to come in and kind of state their purpose and kind of, you know, same thing with the booster club and kind of, we have so many clubs. I've heard so many people, you know, that are associated with the school and so many people like, oh, this club's raising money for this and this club's raising money for that. It'd just be interesting to have a conversation with everybody and like, what is our purpose and are we serving all students?
And I think, too, is...
I think we mentioned that before.
When you, when you have all these different clubs, I mean, sometimes, you know, this year, I think, is a little different than the last couple of years where change in leadership and things like that, you might not know all of the stuff that's going on at the fields at night. I hate to say it, I mean, I feel like sometimes I could drive by and say, yep, I know something's going on there tonight. There shouldn't be anything tonight. Why is there cars? You know, this, just today, I got an email saying, oh, can we park all of our vehicles on the old football field this weekend? We're having a 12U tournament. What? You know? So, it's those things you don't know and it's just the assumption that it's that club and they can use it and it's a weekend and you don't know.
Well, and if we move forward with any sort of branding, obviously, there'll be policy that follows that, but then to make it clear to every club and group that uses it, what the rules are and what the precedents will be and expectations will be from there on out.
Are clubs using the logo?
Yeah.
Well...
And I think sometimes they deviate even from the colors of the, than standard logo we have.
Maybe that's next, like, winter's project. Let's get through our referendum and then we'll tackle the next big thing.
Yeah, we don't want to do that now.
No, 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 no. Just maybe next summer at our board retreat, we'll talk about that.
All right. We will move on to six point three. Is there any board committee reports?
Uh, no. Well, I mean, we had operations and we kind of are covering, covering a lot of capital purchases and stuff like that. If anybody has any questions, I know Brian sent out some pretty good emails. We did sort through all of the equipment purchases that we need to get through and so that's been approved and I think it's good now, so.
Changing and midstreamed also.
What's that?
Changing and midstreamed also.
Yeah, yeah, we just got a little kilter, but that should be all good. So, if anybody has any questions on what kind of equipment we're purchasing or, we had good discussions, so.
Okay.
We had negotiations on June 10th on ULA language and I can't remember how many sections were there.
Nine of ten.
Nine, we've got nine of ten that are completed that both sides have agreed to.
That we have verbal agreements.
Verbal agreement, too, but ten might take a little time.
Should be.
But it's, but it's...
It's doable. It's doable. We'll get there.
It's been very good.
Yeah, very, it's been going very well. We did not set another meeting date as both sides, there was so much going around, the fourth, we'll confer sometime in July and we get that discussion going again and finish that up. Then we'll start on the dollars and cents.
Right, all right.
The easy part. The easy part.
I did agree with you guys switched on that zero-turn mower, which was a good thing because I was kind of questioning that night whether a 54-inch is big enough and the way it turned out and how we could trade it, we could get to the 72-inch for, actually, overall, probably about a thousand dollars cheaper than we were going to go the other way, but there was some question which tractor we should trade in. You know, if you could put James on the spot that day, he basically said if it wasn't due to the money, he'd trade to John Deerean, you know, type of thing. So, he thought it was cheaper to keep it. That was his main original thing and I'm still kind of negotiating with him on this trailer and I think we need to leave that because I, I don't really like kilp bed trailers, so. And when I checked today on a 20-foot ramp fold-up thing, it was like 5100 dollars, so one of them's actually cheaper than...
We got some more quotes that are going in that folder, so.
And then he said, too, is, you know, I said, well, they got a 24-foot in hand. He said, well, do we need a 24-foot if I haul all the stuff? And I said, I don't know. It might be something you need to check on, you know, maybe. So, but I don't think we need to get that yet, but I think we're pretty much doing and, you know, it's the same thing whether your personnel or what you need, the right equipment, the right person for what you're doing and we need to get this stuff, so, even though it's spending.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we will be moving on to six point four, superintendent report.
One of the short ones for the night.
Yep.
A few things and this will be short. Got an email this afternoon from Mark Sloan. There will not be a change in the boundary adjustment this year, unfortunately. Wasn't enough, he said it was actually very static compared to last year. You know, there wasn't, we moved backwards last year on it and it's improved a little bit, but again, this is all based on the effect of the adjusting of the property values on residential that took place in 2017 and we're still recovering from that. So, you know, it is what it is. Enrollment, again, I'm just going to give you, each time we have a meeting, I'm going to give you new copies. Brooke updated these as of today and so we don't, some of these are not known for sure, so there's actually, I think, she said there was eight, I think it was eight different I think it was eight different requests for records. And that's a lot of how we can judge, are we actually gonna have more kids leaving? Some of them open enrollees going back to Morehead. So there was eight different ones today. Varying about half of them from elementary and one or two from middle school, one or two from high school. So again, you know, this is again, a little, little drop. And what I'll do when we hit into August is I'll just show you the full history of what's happened over the summer. So you can see exactly how many it went down. Um, you, you know, the one that is the question mark and that's on that kindergarten over at Glendale. Um, because of the forty, forty-three and sitting with the ninety at Dilworth and, you know, again, we've, I brought it up at the last meeting. Um, and there isn't anything you have to deal with tonight. But at some point in time, there will have to be a discussion about, you know, and, and when Margot has her, her site team leadership meeting. Um, that'll be one of the topics for the elementary to talk about. Um, just that they, they think about with how many kids are open enrolled and, okay, are they aware? If we do this, you know, this may go into some of the teachers' kits being over at Dilworth. Two years from now, if the referendum goes, it doesn't matter because they're all over that site and we don't have these issues. But, so. Any, there isn't any significant changes on this.
When is site leadership?
Um. I couldn't.
Sometime in July or?
Oh, it's end of, end of July, definitely.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. Because they'll have both the site team meetings in July and they'll also have the birth of five meetings.
Okay.
So it's something that we, I think we're gonna wanna at least hear recommendations from them. Here's the reality. Okay. Then that way the board can make some determination on the twenty-ninth meeting of July. Because then that gives me time to call the families if I need to and what else not. And talk to the parents about it and, and get a meeting scheduled with parents. So that we can have some options for parents. So. Um, then just, these are more just for curiosity. Uh, this came out actually today, but that was interesting and you will, you will recognize one of those images. So this is out of, uh, School Planning and Management Magazine. Every year they come out with the awards of the year. And if you notice that bottom picture, does that look familiar?
Yeah.
So they just, they were one of the top award winners and what I thought was very interesting. The grand prize winner nationally was also in the state of Minnesota. Shockabye High School. And very similar concept to the Alex. And when you get a chance to read it over on, what I like about how they do this is of course you see how many, they give you a lot of that, uh, that information on the cost per square foot, the costs, uh, per student and such. So, and I've got extra copies for, uh, the whole admin team is, has this also anyway. Uh, to put it in comparison, I was looking at a couple of them from California that were on these awards. And square footage difference, just because of regions. So you notice that Restford Peterson is a hundred and ninety-five bucks per square foot. Okay? That's been a, a good two hundred bucks. We've talked about that quite a bit. About two hundred bucks a square foot. And then Shockabye noticed down by the cities, almost three hundred a square foot. California, the one that was in there, six hundred and eighty dollars a square foot. Six hundred and eighty.
Geez.
Unbelievable.
AC in there, but that's still.
And, but this is, with all of these, you know, I mean, that's just crazy. So. But notice that when you look at that model, talks about six themes. Engineering, manufacturing, science and technology, health sciences, human services, art and communications, and business and entrepreneurship. So that may be one of those that we, it's opening up this fall. Um, so fully expect that, um, they will be setting up for tours and what else not. It'd be really nice to be able to get a core group from the high school and, and some of our community as we're looking at some of this planning for the next two years and just take one of the buses down there and, and that twenty-five passenger or thirty-two passenger, whichever one. And go take a, a trip down there and, and tour that. Just so that we can talk about the curriculum and, and it's, I think that'll be very important for our high school staff to be able to help for envisioning as we, cause we have two years of planning for that with all of our career things. Again, we don't need the Taj Mahals, but it's the curriculum changes and what we're offering for kids that we may pick up some really good ideas on this. So I wanted you just to see those and eat or not. That's it. Just cause everything else is action items tonight.
All right. All right. We will move on to seven point one, the approval of the June tenth meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll go ahead, David.
Second by David. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda under business. Um, you had a total?
Total bills to be approved at this board meeting, ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty-two and sixty-one cents.
Thank you. And also in your board packet, there's the treasurer's report and fund total report, Minnesota liquid asset account, activities account. There is a resignation from Angie Hall-Rumson, the counselor, and Cindy Borg. Both of those were for the end of this past school year. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is that Ronnie?
Ronnie.
Okay. Um, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point one. This is the end of the year school contracts for the summer. Um, one is for Wanda Walseth and one is for Betty Benson. Have a motion to approve their contracts. Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll go ahead, David.
Second by David. All those in favor?
They're timing down.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is nine point two. This is the second reading of policy nine oh two A. Um, use of the school facility, facilities, that is inside the building and outside of the building. Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion? Any questions?
Many question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point three. This is a non-certified, certified contract for Lydia Chansky. Paraprofessional, um, at the start of the school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, David.
And are you seconding it?
Sure thing.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Nine point four. This is the non-certified contract for Cindy Leach. Uh, paraprofessional, fifteen fifty-six an hour. Start of the school year. Do I have a motion to approve her contract?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nine point five. This is a non-certified contract for Rebecca Wilkie. Another professional, a paraprofessional physician.
So moved.
Motion by Ronnie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to nine point six. Uh, non-certified contract for Sarah Burnside. Another paraprofessional physician. Other motion. Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
If you're wondering if you have any more coming, there's still five or six open ones.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness. Those are ass. Yeah. Well, thank you to Mary Ann and everybody who sent you in our interviews. I know we got them in some and, yeah. Good work. Keep it up.
They've been busy.
Stand up. Pull the sign up.
All right. We'll move on to nine point seven. This is the certified contract for Betty Benson, the speech. She's staying with us.
Yes.
For the next school year.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. All those. And a second by?
Yeah.
Ronnie?
Is this one we've had or is this a new position?
No.
We've had.
She just decided to stay one more year.
Yeah, she was gonna retire and then rescinded.
Yeah.
Was she full-time before or part-time?
Part-time, same, same amount.
Same amount.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Uh, this, moving on to nine point eight, the depository. This is staying with Northwestern State Bank.
So moved.
Motion by Ronnie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is nine point nine. This is the impressed fund. This is, um, putting Eric's name on there. Keeping Jeannie and Brooke also on there and Brian.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Petty Cash is the nine point ten. That's the same thing. Just, um, putting Eric's name on there as one that is authorizing the Petty Cash Fund. All those, uh, gosh.
So moved.
All right. Now, David and.
There's a few of these names. Same name.
Second.
Second by Ronnie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This is nine point eleven, the student activity fund. Same thing.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Last one on that part of it, nine point two, or nine point twelve. Um, why, didn't we do this before, Brian? This is investments.
I don't know. Cause we always do it for July.
For July first. Okay. So this is to authorize Brian for?
Uh, for treasurer.
Authorize the treasurer. Yep, the treasurer or Brian. Yep.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point thirteen. This is the budget.
There's three copies of that. I said, you guys would have the hard copies tonight. And did you, did you have any, any questions and again for David and I know Laura's not here, but the, the one that always confuses people when you look at the, the working budget twenty that fills in this year to date, no, we have not spent those dollars. You'll notice it's exact same numbers that are in the budget from the previous year. They just transfer those numbers in there for now.
Oh.
Once we get into it and then we won't be seeing that. Once we start running.
Yep.
So, don't, don't worry that. My God, we've already spent everything as a year.
Could be a ten year.
The, of course, when, what, the things I always look for on the, the revenue, I wanna know, um, does it look like in the state aid that we're, we're close? And so when you look at the two hundred series, you know, that's, um, you know, general education aid is, is in there. That's, that's our big number. And, you know, you want to be, we know that they typically hold ten percent. So if we're getting close to ninety percent, you know, that's a good sign. Anything over ninety percent, I'd be really thrilled because that means our enrollment was actually higher than we had budgeted in. So, you know, this is all gonna come down to what those final numbers on the students are. Um, don't get too crazy wondering as far as when you look at, um, another one that kind of, I think throws people is in the levy portion, um, on the property tax, right at the, so on the revenue one, the zero, zero, one property tax. You notice the budget showed one point four million for this past year, one point four two three, and it shows year to date, one point eight. That is partly because we have to move stuff when we get into the audit and it'll move into debt service and all those other things. So you'll notice in the debt service, there's no money coming in. That's all done distribution through the audit. Okay? So again, don't get too worried on that. These numbers, as far as on the projection on the revenue is all based on the revenue projection model on M D E's site. And unfortunately, it is from March twelfth of two thousand nineteen. They have not created a new version of it yet. Because M D E, to put it in simple terms, is shorthanded on people that have been doing this stuff and they're retiring. And they're training new people in to try to do it. And they've got a person who's never done it before trying to do the revenue projection model. And I guarantee you, that would not be a fun thing for a newbie to try to do. And I spoke to the person who's doing it and she said, well, I'll never have it in June. And I said, it's interesting because by law, we have to have the board approve budgets by July first. And we don't even have a revenue projection model that I can use that is aligned to legislative session that just finished. So, and I don't dare try to over-project on the special ed. And that was a big law change.
And they can't get the person or the people who retired to sign a helpless health contract?
Some of those people retired multiple times.
Oh.
I mean, they've been, they've, a couple of them came back four or five different times.
Wow.
So they're just underhanded, uh, understaffed, I should say. And, uh, it is what it is. But again, when you look at that one-page budget, I think, uh, a couple, couple of the pieces to keep in mind, you'll notice that, um, yeah, the, the general fund looks like it's, you know, isn't too bad. But again, that's partly because of one reason. And that would be what we've got for the L T F M and safe schools. And those are reserved numbers. So that tells me that the unreserved is actually gonna be in the red, which we know is the case. Okay? Um, this is built in with a soft freeze, if you're wondering as far as on personnel. But what I will tell you, and those on negotiation committee will see a lot more with this stuff, is our certified matrix, our steps now are averaging, just the steps, are averaging anywhere from two point five to two point seven percent increase just on the steps. So there's no way of building a two percent budget even with a soft freeze.
Unless you freeze steps.
Unless you freeze steps and do a hard freeze.
Hard freeze.
So I built in a budget just so that we would all see what it will look like with a two point seven. And we put a two point seven in all personnel costs. Just so you know. Again, this is an early budget. I'm, there's no point of even approaching any other budget until the revenue projection model. And to be honest, until we get the kids in in the fall. Because until we get those numbers, we really don't know our accurate amount of revenue. The levy is a hundred percent known because the levy portion is all based on what you approved back in December. So those are the numbers right from that levy. Okay? Cause that's why it was an eighteen payable nineteen. So it's, it's coming down to just what's our state aid gonna look like. And again, estimates on special ed. And again, special ed is the revenue projection model. I can't even get an updated copy of it until sometime in July. So this isn't that different than most of our budgets in June. Um, I think we tried to, tried to identify as much as we could as far as the areas that could be curveballs for us. Whether it be the, uh, our, our transportation, our, our building energy usages and all of that. We tried to give realistic numbers on it, but bottom line is eighty percent of the budget in the general fund is personnel. So you can't really impact the economic side on the expenditures unless you deal with personnel issues. So. Any other questions for me on, for you take motions and all that?
Did you have any?
No, I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Ronnie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point fourteen. This is the capital equipment purchases. Brian did send an email out. So you could see all of those. Um, Amy has prefaced that she could answer any of those questions if anybody had any of those things. Otherwise, looking for a motion to approve.
And the only suggestion I would make is that you just, I would, I would recommend that you make a motion without the trailer. Because that way we've still got time. And even when we're done with the retreat, we can talk about the differences on the quotes between whether we do a tilt bed or not tilt bed. Cause we'll have all of those quotes down there for that one. And we've got no rush on that.
Okay. Right. So I'll, the motion.
Yeah, I'll write that in there.
For purchases with exception to. For order of purchases, with exception to...
Okay. Looking for a second motion.
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. We're finally in the tens. 10.1. This is a certified contract. Oh, my gosh. My gosh, okay. This is a certified contract for Lisa Osman, Osman, special ed teacher.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second? Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. This is, 10.2 is a certified contract for Michael Winskow, high school... Wisco? Wisco? High school counselor.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. So he's new?
Yep.
All right.
Did you meet him? You're happy?
He actually both...
So will he be doing more career, or is Katie going to do career?
Katie will be doing more of them.
Okay, so he'll be doing more social, social, emotional?
Yeah.
Okay.
More of the eighth through 10th grade.
Okay. Good fit, though, you feel that?
Very good.
And, and what they did was, it was Heidi, Wayne, and then Katie. And was there anyone else that was involved?
Brittany was in there.
So, so basically, making sure that we had. And then what's the best fit of the camp? We really lucked out this year as far as on the amount and the quality to be able to get, to have two openings like that and to get those filled is...
Yeah, the two constant positions are in some... I mean, they're, they're young, but they're going to be stars, I think.
Okay.
These are all new, right?
Yep, both of those to the...
Yeah, but I mean, the first, all of these approvals are new people.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we also have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. This is 10.3. This is the certified contract for Angel Akri, middle school counselor.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie. Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 10.4. This is a certified contract for Laura Manstrom, high school fax teacher. This is amazing that...
Yeah. I just read that. I was like, are you serious?
Yes, so we're...
Kudos to all the hard work you guys have been doing.
We're on the fast track in, well, five days.
So this is phenomenal.
Phenomenal. Can you tell us a little bit about her?
Laura is coming, well, she grew up in Wyamere. The last two years, she's been at the middle school in Grand Forks. One of the middle schools as a fax teacher. Was getting married late summer, early fall to a fellow from Kindred. So that's where they're going to be. Just excited, I can't remember how she heard about it, but every conversation she's just been, just excited about that opportunity.
Well, I think, I believe how she heard, how she heard was because we were meeting, trying to figure out, what are we going to do for these positions? Brainstorming, and then Heidi contacted our middle school fax person and said, "In case you find anybody else..." And they happened to be at a conference together. And she talked to this gal, who said, "Yeah, I would definitely be, I'm getting married, blah, blah, blah." And so then he ran with it and ended up meeting with her on Friday. So I mean, it just...
Fantastic. I was really worried about the position, to be honest, with being a .6. I really, really, really was. So I'm thrilled that, thank you. Good job, all of you.
Another good one.
Awesome.
All right, so looking... All right. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
So if you're wondering on certified, all special ed, which I am shocked, is now set. Every single position certified except for one at the high school, and then, which is our industrial tech, and that will be potentially problematic. And the other one that we'll be dealing with, as we put, and I'll be advertising for tomorrow, as we have Geraldine, which, there's no board action on Geraldine moving to the other position to special ed, because that's just by assignment. But then that opens up a need for one more elementary teacher. But we have to wait on that stuff until July, because Geraldine can't put in for it until then for that tiered license. So I can advertise, I'll get the advertising going. I think we're looking at trying to set up for, like, the, whatever on that Friday is before the, Friday must be the 19th, I think would be the, the date. And then that way, it gives us, it'll give us time to get the recommendation and the board to do the hiring officially for that elementary position on the 29th of July.
Do we have any of our probationary teachers we let go interested, or potentially?
Both of them got jobs.
Yeah. They did.
Which I'm happy for them, that they both got jobs. But yeah, they, they both got jobs, so, and they both knew we couldn't do anything on this until we got into July.
Well, no, I don't blame them at all. I was just curious.
No, yep.
I was thinking the same things.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Moving on to 10.5. This is designation of identified official with authority for education identity access management for fiscal, that's a lot.
And you have to do this every year, and because there's making a switch to the system. Basically, what this is, every time we have for, whether it be serves, whether it has to be with the early childhood, there's all the test rest, all those things, you have to have, I have to go in and give authorization for that new person, like with Eric, and there's about 20 different ones that I go in and keep track of. And then I give them permission, and then they go and use their MDE login, and then that way, they can get access. And it's required that the school boards on an annual basis get this in the record.
All right. Question by Lindsay. Is there a second? David?
Is that David?
Yep.
That was you, David.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries out. This is fiscal personnel is Monday, July 15th at 5:00. And that is here, followed by the board meeting at 6 o'clock. And after that, it will be meet and confer after that. So are you bringing sandwiches, Brian? Because that's like a long...
Well, a question that I actually have for you to think about, you know, the fiscal personnel. I know we won't have any new update from the state. If, if we're able to put the meet and confer at 5 o'clock and bypass having fiscal personnel...
Oh, okay.
I would be for that.
Because the other thing I'm thinking about is, it would give us the opportunity to do a work session after the board meeting on the survey data.
Oh, yeah, we had talked about that before, yeah.
Because we'll get the survey data. We know that the survey is being done 8th to the 12th. And we'll have the summary of that survey data. So you either do it in the middle of the meeting, or we just do a work session, talk about, okay, here's what we learned from it.
I think it makes the most sense to do that after.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll talk to Dan, I'll talk to Tony about meet and confer. We'll find out whether they have any topics. And if they do, that way, the committee will get the topics in advance, and we plan that for 5 o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just let us know. I'm assuming, because we didn't do a meet and confer this winter, because they didn't submit a...
Right.
Right.
Agenda, so see, talk with Tony.
Yep, and we talked about that negotiations a little bit.
So see if he has any agenda, and then just let us know. Because if they don't want to meet, you know...
Yeah, no, that way makes more sense, because then, then we're not rushed to finish what we need to do.
Well, we get that into the minutes from tonight's meeting, that we won't have a personnel meeting. And then a tentative, meet and confer for 5 o'clock.
Correct.
I think they'd rather have that anyway, in case they got softball and all those other things that people do during the summer.